And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is 125 South Green Bush Road Site Plan, PB 1917. Yeah, you need to come onto the table?
We were hiding them back.
Um, guys, we're actually gonna let the other one go first because it's about maybe a ten-minute shot.
Oh.
Thank you.
That's right.
Yes, thank you.
I'm doing the opposite.
Yes.
Okay.
Theirs is a very simple application.
So you're moving up, um, 155? No, what else is it talking about?
No, the other one.
What's the other thing?
Thirteen, eleven to thirteen, right, oh, I'm sorry, um, 100.
100 business. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So we call up, okay. 100 Corporate Drive, 100 Corporate Drive is called up. They call the Town Board, from the Town Board, but it's only yours, I'm sorry. Don't be aware of that.
What's your name, sir?
Seth Mandelbaum. Here's my card. Sure. And I actually have some of these here, these are each these handouts, instead of trying to see them across the room on the screen. And we have a very brief presentation. Good evening, my name is Seth Mandelbaum from McCullough Goldberg and Stell. I represent Onyx Equities, the owner of the Hudson Crossing Industrial Park, formerly the Bradford Corporate Park, located around 303. If you flip to the second and third page, you'll see location, an issue of 100 Corporate Drive, which currently has Restaurant Depot located in the back of the building, on the first floor, and Strom Incorporated, which is a production studio, is on the third floor, on the right side of the building, looking at the front of the building. I want to mention Matt Flath is here from Onyx Equities, Vice President of Onyx. And if you flip to the next couple pages, where there's the history of this building. Building was built in 2009. Onyx purchased the property that this is located on, the entire office, industrial park, about two years ago. And the third floor of this building, which from 303 is the level that you see, kind of at the road level, has about 36,400 square feet of empty space. Onyx has recently signed up a tenant to occupy about 22,500 square feet of that, which is District 96 Beer Factory. They're actually looking to relocate from New City Parkstown to this location because it has more space for them and better layout, so they're very excited to do that. And you can see here, there'll still be a little bit of vacant space in the middle of the third floor. Strom is sort of on the right side, and then District 96 will be kind of on the left side. And if you flip to the next couple pages where it says zoning impact and proposed line adjustment, on the slide that says zoning impact, there's a big fat orange line. That's actually the boundary between the LI District and the LIO District. And this is split between two uses. A light manufacturing type use, which is actually the brewing of the beer, which is the darker gray shading, which is allowed in both zoning districts. And then the white area is sort of the taproom, which is a nightclub use under the zoning that is allowed toward the top of the page, but not allowed in the LIO District, which is that little area in the corner. And we met with Jane Slaven and Ron Magrino over the summer and kind of talked through it and went back to District 96 and says, is there any way you can reconfigure your space? They said, no, if that's the way they have to be for beer, it really doesn't work and the requirements for building code for the restaurant. So Jane suggested we bring a petition to the Town Board to move the district line. This is the last page. So it just follows the whole property, basically goes out to 303 and across and then back up. It's kind of similar to what happened with Town Plaza Two down 303, where they had two different buildings that were in different zones, where a pizza place was allowed in one building but not the other. So a few years ago, the Town Board adopted a similar amendment that would have come to this board at that time as well. So we're really just here on a recommendation from the Town Board, a referral to you to move that line. So just, just this whole property with the LI no longer have that sort of anomaly of LIO in a portion of the property. We are set for public hearing next month with the Town Board. They already heard a preliminary presentation. And that's essentially it, or having answered any questions that the board might have about this proposal.
So what are we looking to do here?
Yeah, and this is other business, it's a referral from the Town Board.
Yeah.
They have to approve the zone change request. So you just have to, the Town Board know how you feel.
So that's a review or a recommendation from us?
Correct.
Mr. Sweeney, if I can also add consent to lead agency, the Town Board being lead agency, that's probably the main thing.
So simply the existing building was built and it's split by two zones.
So what I'm actually looking at with this, we're making a recommendation to the Town Board.
Correct.
Got it.
More objection to the Town Board being the lead agency. Any questions here?
No question.
Um, one question, is there an outdoor element this far?
Potentially. There may be a seasonal element of the...
Will we really have a space, are we in the front or towards the rear?
That's not part of this application though, right?
Yeah, part of the site plan application.
There's one, just asking some information.
Yeah, likely toward the front on the left, right? Yeah, there's potential space there.
Uh, I don't know, we should be in, Town Board being the agency and they handle zone changes, that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, so I think we're agreement there. As a sign of papers later?
Mr. Sweeney, I would say it'd be best to vote, so ask for a motion and vote on it.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
Motion. To... The vote to approve the Town Board lead agency and objection to the zone change.
Second thing? All favor?
Aye.
Secret too?
The Town Board's gonna...
You're gonna have to slide this off at the end of the meeting.
Perfect, got it?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Here, folks, thank you so much for taking this person.
All right, and now we'll call up PB 1917, 125 South Green Bush Road. Last question, we'll do the two plans separately, is it separate on the agenda, right? One, one five, one five separately?
Yeah, you have to read them to the record separately.
See, I'm on the slide, moving out of here. Sign in, and what's your name?
Joseph Scaramato, Council to comment Paxos.
Just spell your last name.
S-C-A-R-M-A-T-O.
Is Brian Condon, zero one zero, and Condon Paxos.
Kevin, have you guys in bed, you want to give us a description of what we have for today?
Yes, okay, so my name is Joseph Scaramato, I'm Council to comment Paxos. We're here on the 125 Green Bush Road and 155 Green Bush Road application. Also with us this evening is Jake Perdugo, the project manager for 125 Green Bush LLC, which is managing member is Gabe Alexander, he's an active developer in the community, very well-known. Site engineer is Sparco Youngblood, Stephen Sparco here with us tonight. Traffic engineer, Colliers Engineering, Ron Rehman. And the architect, Barry Postcancer, is also here. We'll mention a survey later on, and that was done by Jay Greenwell, Jay's not with us tonight. Background of the project. Properties are 125, 155 Green Bush Road, exists on the east side of the 303 corridor. Tax lots are 74.07-1, 15.1 and 15.2. The zone is light industrial zone, LI on your zoning map. And by recent survey, recent is not quite accurate now, but by survey with Jay Greenwell and also a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, it's acknowledged that this is not in the 303 corridor overlay zone. So some of our calculations are based on the fact that we are not in the overlay zone. Current use of 125 is a warehouse and storage and distribution facility. It's conforming as of right use in place as it stands. It has an actual bulk of about 318,000 square feet, but it is allowable under the current code to be as large as 534,000 square feet. 155 Green Bush, the companion application, is a vacant piece of parcel of land owned by the same entity. It's immediately adjacent to the 125 property to the north. The property allows on the bulk table for approximately 255,000 square feet of light industrial space, similar to the existing building at 125. Now, the proposed use, 125 Green Bush is proposed to be expanded in its current use. And it should be noted that the use here is not consistent with what's called high cube parcel hub, Land Use Code 156. We're not seeking an approval for that type of use. So I know that there have been a number of comments made to try to analyze this, this application in terms of, well, it could potentially become, but that's not why we're here. We're asking you to only view the application based on what we're presenting. The developer, in the event that he changes, would be obliged to and would certainly come before you and ask for a revision of this plan, certainly. So 125, which is currently, as I said, 318,000 square foot, is proposed to be increased by 97,000 square feet to be 415,000 square feet. And that would still be under the maximum allowed by the bulk table and as of right. It's also an as-of-right application and no variances are requested. On 155 Green Bush, a similar warehouse, storage and distribution, new construction warehouses to be constructed. And it's the same use and will probably benefit some of the same existing tenants of 125 because some of them are seeking additional space. And again, this is not a high cube parcel hub construction. We're proposing to build there 128,000 square feet in an as-of-right construction without variances. And again, that particular property was permitted a bulk of 255. So we're well under for both properties and as-of-right application. This matter has been before this board since 2019. There have been hearings before this board in March, September, October of 2019, and in March, June and July of 2020. Some of the presentation has been suspended due to COVID and we're now only beginning to ramp back up. Engineering review has gone on throughout the process and our engineers have corresponded with your consultants on a regular basis addressing issues that have been raised, especially issues related to traffic. Traffic study has been revised several times. A new consultant was brought in, I believe by the Town at one point, and we've, we've had consultant on addressing issues that have been raised. Drainage review has been undertaken. There is no SWIP in place at this time, but is in process and we will complete as necessary. We've accounted for all water quality requirements currently under the plan we've, we now have before you, but as things get revised, then we of course will revise the plan. So this is the third public hearing on this matter since, you know, 2019, in March, when we filed. And we acknowledge the right of the public to comment on traffic, safety, drainage, environmental issues. And we find however that these are justifiable concerns. There are also issues of emotion that frequently come up in these types of discussions. I'm a resident of the county for more than 20 years and, you know, I can certainly understand how people are distressed by the lack, by the loss of potential open space and used shed. But we also acknowledge as professionals and attorneys that property rights are such that if, if an as-of-right project is presented, it should be given a due hearing and the right of the property owner should also be acknowledged. We've made a number of accommodations in response to prior public hearings. And when I conclude here, I'll ask our engineer Steve Sparco to just give you a very light overview so as to get on with the public hearing tonight. Again, respectfully, your role here is to, you know, enforce the duly established building and zoning codes. You'll take public comments on the application, you'll protect the public interest. We'll also respect the applicant's rights under existing zoning codes and building codes and his property rights. So we expect to act directly with the planning board as the interface between the applicant and the public and to expeditiously process the development applications. And we expect that once you take comment tonight, I'm not sure that you'll be able to close a public hearing, but we certainly would hope so, so we can move forward with this. Project's been in abeyance for several years here. Our role here tonight is to listen and take comment. We'll be prepared to influence, interface with the board based on those comments. We're not in a position here to debate or to rebut every issue that's raised in the public hearing, but we will listen and we will take under advisement and deal with you accordingly. So with that, I'm gonna ask our engineer Steve Sparco to make a very, very brief overview so we can move on with the public hearing.
Just spell your last name for me.
Sparco, S-P-A-R-A-C-O. Thank you. Instead of going through plan by plan, it's just general revisions for the, more for the final site plan that we made on these set of plans that are for you today. A few of the key items that have been revised, the last time this has been for the board, I believe in 2019 is the last time we were here. One of the key items was establishing, there's some questions about the rate of way. We had our survey of Jay Greenwell, addressed those issues, coordinate with the county highway department, and we've reflected that in the current plan. Another item that we've gone, a lot of the comments from the town of Orange Town, Environmental Management, Bruce Peters, wanted a lot of more detail with the plans such as profiles. We get all the profiles for all the proposed utilities on site. He wanted some more blowups of the potential. We showed the blowups for the above ground potential reasons. His latest comments is asking for below ground, so we'll provide those for the next submission. The Town Engineer Drainage Consultant, Brian Brokert Associates, broker engineering, reviewed the maps once again. And conclusion was the same as the last letter written in 2019, in March, to the board. The drainage concerns have been satisfied with minor condition and just a few items you can clarify in the SWIP documents we'll prepare. We have not prepared the SWIP documents because we have not achieved make-deck pursuant to SECRET and we're, we're hoping that the planning board will act in favor of that, if not rescinding another meeting. So that in general is will be the major changes that have occurred since the last one award. So if there's any question in detail, I want to answer them. But in the meantime, they're mostly housekeeping, final design type requirements that were addressed.
I thought two points before we go to the comments. One, I would just say that you mentioned in your conversation about the final plan, just to make sure everyone's clear this is public story, preliminary and not a final plan review, okay? So not the, we know final is today.
Yeah, I think I'm always seeking...
You're seeking preliminary, never say SECRET.
We believe we've addressed all the traffic, all the environmental issues, drainage, lighting, everything. Has been addressed previously and in the front plan.
And second thing, I think maybe my name was the time to just point out that some of the minor changes are, let's see, what's changed from last time?
Again, if Jane can look through the drawings, I can go...
I'll try, she's actually a little funny, I don't know her.
These drawings I have are the overall drawings and really specify them. Just in general, just minor revisions on some just clarification items, really on these sheets here. You can keep looking up, the major works in the details. Can keep going. This is all just minor cleanup, showing tops, top, top, top sole stop wall areas, adding details as far as the location of an access road. I mean, these have been on there before, but just tweaking, tweaking them to final considerations. Again, this isn't for final site plan and we will find, we'll provide those final details later. Keep going up. Here's a profile, pond two profile that was prepared for this pond. All these profiles, utility profiles, all proposed. His latest letter, Bruce Peters asked for the existing as well. I don't know if there's any on file, but we can surely do that, but it's an additional item that's new for us. More details, infiltration pond. All the details have been updated accordingly and these are just the general details that are on the plan. So that in essence is the changes to plan. Again, as you can tell, the profiling and all those blowups and the basins are all final detailed work. And it's nothing to do with SECRET.
Right, so I've stopped reading all the comments from our expert groups, referrals. So first of all, the PRC has two comments, I'm gonna read them. I'm, I'm reading the comments for 125 South Green Bush Road right now. So the first comment from the PRC was, direct demand that all conditions be met prior to getting the final plan for approval of the site plans. And the PRC direct demands that the applicant should consider separating the properties and find separate driving way, allowing properties to act independently. I have two letters from the Office of Building and Zoning and Planning, Jane Slaven.
Mr. Chairman, if you can just read it. October 26th letter superseded by 25th.
Yeah, I read that, too, too.
Yeah, you don't have to read both of them.
On November 25th, which has seventeen comments, but superseded by October 26th. And that letter has sixteen comments, seventeen comments, sorry, seventeen comments. Very difficult to highlight for...
Yeah.
On number sixteen. Okay, number sixteen says the revised full EAF has not been received. That's one of the changed comments. Okay. I have the Department of Urban Management's hearing, Bruce Keating's office, and he has thirty-five comments.
Most of our repeat comments, and the last time, all to do with final category, not all but...
We'll talk about that, okay? I have broker engineering. This is from October 24th. The proposed actions demonstrate potential significant adverse impact that suspected drainage cannot be mitigated. Therefore, I recommend that 125 South Green Bush Road and 155 South Green Bush Road site plans be approved for drainage. Limited project comments, and he had, they had ten comments. I have the Bureau of Fire Division, October 15th, Dave Meduski, and he has four comments. I have the Rockland County Department of Planning from October 19th, Doug Schutz, and he has nineteen comments. For the public, these comments are all on the side you want to read them, we're not gonna read every single comment into the record, we'd be here for hours now. I have the Rockland County Center for High Mental Health, October 5th, Elizabeth Mello, and she has three comments. Rockland County Highway Department, October 10th, October 1st, from Dylan Rajin Rajas. I'm sorry, I definitely put you in that one. And he has eleven comments. I have comments from the Rockland County Drain Agency, October 25th. That's Sahar Tatikara, and it's a narrative. It says the Rockland County Drain Agency does not object to the planning board assuming as far as the D agency for SECRET purposes above matter. Okay? I have a letter from AKRF, Arissa Terrello, on October 19th. And it's a, it's a review of comments on the Nobill, the Trip Generation and the Barking comments. And some other things here. Captain, we're teaming up, old letter from AKRF, from Arissa Terrello, October 26th. Again, talking about the existing site and your building conditions, building conditions, truck trips, capacity analysis, crash analysis. These are our traffic studies.
Mr. Chairman, it's also Elaine who was here representing AKRF, so just have both names on the record.
Got it, so Arissa and Elaine, yeah, we can see it, thank you. I have another record, another letter, again from AKRF, from Arissa and Elaine. Excuse me. From October 10th, which I'm sure we can have finals on, okay? I have a joint letter from both, I think I'll read it for 125 right now. It's from Colliers Engineering Design. It's a letter from September 1st. And I think it's engineering comments on the project. We have a letter from Sparco Youngblood, PLC. Looks like it's coming from, did it signature here? Okay. Great, yeah, coming from Steve Sparco, September 21st. And these again, I guess, are your comments on the conference, your responses?
On the previous response.
Okay, on the previous, from the previous, we have, okay. Got it, two thousand, got it, okay? And I also have all of the comments that were ready to the meeting of March 11th, 2000 and, what was that? 2020? Twenty. And everything came before that, all from the record. Anything else, Cheryl?
No, it's a...
Okay. What's eleven?
One from Elizabeth Duffy.
Oh, I put those in 155.
Oh, oh, fine, okay, all right.
Same time, we'll share that.
Okay, go to the next one, okay? All right, so, Mike, Mr. Adele, any comments?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, just shut on your mic.
Can you explain to me why the two pluses are being designed to remind each other? Why isn't each site being designed independently and that's building part two, Rockland County playing with the twelve?
Well, the drainage is interesting one. That definitely has to, there's cross easements already, and round, round the, you know, runs downhill to the side. And they go through both sites. That's why the site was evaluated and broker engineering actually agreed with the assessment to evaluate drainage on both sites together. As far as the circulation, again, there is gonna be a common tenant that is believed to go to the other building. It's not guaranteed right now, but we have agreed to, for example, prepare separate site plans which we have, separate SWIPs for the final or preliminary and final design. The, there's a two existing, I believe there's two existing, yeah, there's two existing entry, entryways at the site where all the mountain ops are not viewed, and the other one between the two sites already. So it makes sense to tie into the existing and not increase the amount of properties on site. I think that's, I don't know what sums it up, unless you've got something in, or...
I mean, if they're commonly owned properties...
I know that, but if they're gonna be separated in the future or if they're gonna be combined in the tomorrow? If they have a client, does that client own both properties? If it is, then the property should be combined. If they're two separate clients, then they should be separate entities. That's what I'm saying, is if you start doing cross easements and you're gonna start, start developing into two distinct properties with two businesses, you're gonna wind up with a very difficult situation. Who's responsible for each of the easements, who's responsible for this drainage, who's responsible...
Who's responsible for each of the easements, who's responsible for this drainage, who's responsible for that? We saw that with the subdivision of the advice property program. So that's why I bring my question.
Understood.
Okay. The possibility that you have for this project, what are they gonna use for warehouses, or warehouse for? Do we know?
Yeah, it's bulk distribution, it's not manufacturing, product is manufactured elsewhere. It's stored there, and they distribute it from there, locally based.
Just looking at blocking the trucks, don't block five, the AKRF letter dated ten nineteen. They talked, you talked about forty-six truck spaces at the one twenty-five Greenbush, where were they located? I don't see it on the, on the zoning map.
Twenty-one of the docks, that covers twenty-one of those, forty-six command. We have a letter from Don Brown, who, in the previous term, he had made a decision that he submitted to the board, that there would only be, parking required would only be two spaces per, one space for two employees. Therefore, you need twenty-five employees for each project, and if that's the case, we have far too much parking, which thereby allows plenty of room for the truck parking on the site.
You have to show the truck parking, that's, that's any kind of spots that you don't show on the plans. That has to be through the plans. Okay, and say there's other twenty-one doctors. There's school bus park from there now, you stated previously that lease will be terminated prior to the start of construction. A letter application to renew the special term, received nine twenty-three, twenty-one, can you clarify that?
Yes. Due to the delay of processing this application, and the developers need to maintain income, you know, the number of businesses have failed over the COVID period here, because business just stops running. This is a willing tenant, he operates during school year, so his lease is effectively extending through the next school year. We don't anticipate that this project will be approved, such that we could put a shovel in the ground before that lease expires. So, and we still stand by our statement that that lease will only exist until, until we begin construction. So we have a right to terminate the lease at any time prior to the start of construction.
That's written in lease?
Yeah.
Okay, and I think Rockland County Planning was asking about the, the agreement that is showing the location of the buses.
I don't know that the buses are moving, because we're not doing any construction.
When you feel like, when you do, that's what they ask.
In the future. We don't manage the bus company.
Okay, but you have your lease, and that is...
They're not gonna be relocated on our site.
All right, but the, your lease says that it can be terminated at any time.
Yeah.
Have we submitted a copy, the lease to the county attorney?
Sure, I'll consult with the owner, maybe he submitted it, but we will, the lease is pending, actually, the actual signing of the lease pending the approval, because the approval is now before the town, he's coming for a permit. If he doesn't get the permit, obviously, we're not gonna sign the lease. In which case, his lease is expired, he's required to re-own yourself immediately.
Now, the new tenant is going to, or the possible tenant is gonna be taking over this operation. Do you know the number of employees that they're gonna have?
Well, the, there will be a number of new tenants coming on. We don't have any prospective tenants signed up at this point. So, this entity presenting this application as the owner of the real estate will be, you know, a passive manager. He's not gonna be operating out of there, he's not going to be, you know, conducting business there. He'll be sub, he'll be leasing it to...
Please determine though that he's only needs twenty-five parking spaces for the employees of that building.
Subject to the nature of what is provable by zoning, in other words, the uses are essentially storage where large pallets would be loaded onto vehicles, you'd be using forklifts and not people packing boxes and things such as that. So, based on the use that we have already at one twenty-five, the number of our tenants, a couple of our tenants, rather, have expressed an interest in expanding on the site, and their operation already shows that they don't have the need for parking that you might anticipate.
Do we have spaces land banked, if possible, while new businesses are coming in that would need more spaces for employees?
I believe we have adequate space on the site, we can consult engineering about exactly how many and where we would need them, but yes.
We should see that on the plans. Land back spaces for additional parking in the future?
I don't believe that we're going to need land back spaces after, even after I put on the truck parking, additional truck parking for the one twenty-five site. It needs a total of forty-six, that's twenty-one for the docks.
Yeah.
The reason why, by the way, there's so many spaces, is initially, when we started this application, the interpretation was based upon another criteria, one for experience for the building, and it was then determined later in the history, closer to now, by the Brenner's letter, with the number of spaces being just the number of employees that are required, which makes more sense. That being said, I don't think there's any, any need for a land back spaces on the site.
But you don't know how many people that these new businesses are bringing in?
We can assume that it has a maximum of so many people, and we have enough parking for that many people.
But that's for the whole building, or part of the building?
That's for the whole building. And I don't see that being a problem whatsoever.
So we think there's only twenty-five employees for all buildings, insane?
Currently.
And do they expand, do they plan to have more employees?
I think, no, not twenty-five, currently, there's fifty, I believe, for the one twenty-five building.
Are they staying there, those fifty?
They're the same, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Some will be relocated to additional space to be built, but they'll be spread over a larger space.
Same company, with the same employees, more space. That's what I understand. If there's gonna be, I can, on the next set of meetings, I can delineate how many spaces and how many employees can be added to the facility to memorialize it, after I adjust for the truck parking. But there's gonna be ample spaces.
Okay, do we know the hours of operation and days of operation for businesses coming in?
We don't know at this time, it depends on who the tenant is, but they'll conform with the town code.
We approved Amazon of moving further north view, and we have all that information supplied by them when we approved it. Number of employees, number of trucks, hours of operation?
They are not owner occupiers.
Right.
We are not owner occupiers.
Right, we still should know the hours of operation if we're approving something.
And before it's a town code, it should be sufficient, it seems to me. We're not gonna break the law.
Okay, spot, the SWIP plan is not gonna provide as for DEME one, and approvals are not granted without this plan, DEME approved. We have not seen the SWIP yet, for you. We can't, I can't...
The SWIP has nothing to do with the negative declaration.
I would not approve anything unless I see a SWIP until it's approved, no.
It's more of a preliminary document.
I've gone with whose being statements, he's our engineer, and I'm going along with that, whose recommendations.
So you're gonna ignore the Rockford recognition?
I'm going along with our town engineer's recommendations, which we do here normally, that's our precedent.
No, but I can prepare this information, and I will prepare this information. It's been our, we wanted to have the board's input before they defined any two minutes of the expense for each SWIP, because there's a lot of opposition in the past on this project. So before we went into the expense to go through the local SWIP paperwork, which is really a final document, the I can tell you, and I can assert right now, that all the water quality, run of production, all the, all the requirements that you see, that are required in the binder, like you see, are already implemented in the drainage.
We don't have that on paper.
It's in the report I have.
It's not been given, it's not been given to the EME?
I've already seen the hydraulic analysis.
And all of the, the full SWIP report then submitted it?
No, it hasn't.
Okay. And what green infrastructure practices are you providing?
Infiltration.
Infiltration, you don't do anything with green roof or wood separates?
Yes.
You're gonna use wood, or wood separates?
Catch fees and passive load are separated, and it's, it's designed, it's part of the design, to catch, every single catch base.
Now, DEME four, the area disturbance is nineteen point four nine nine seven acres. A maximum of five acres, that at any one time is permitted, project must be phased in.
Correct.
And that, the plans would show that, and the master plan would show how it would be phased in.
Another final design, yeah.
Well, no, we'd have to see that and approve that, we've done that in the past with, with different projects here.
Yeah, final design, approved.
Well, we'd have to see that and approve it.
Not a problem.
Agreed. Okay, the last meeting, and I think the meeting for the, yes, the full environmental impact statement, we have, it's not been submitted yet, can you explain why?
Full environmental impact statement, or full environmental assessment?
The full, the, what's it, sixteen page? The assessment.
I don't have an answer for that question, because I, I think we have prepared it.
No, he asked a short form, he asked a short form.
Okay, we will provide for the next meeting.
He asked for a full one, and we've asked that again, the last two meetings.
I can double check, I don't recall. It's not, it's not a big...
I'm just going to go right down the spot. All right, do you plan to air backup jump rates? Are you needing cooling?
No.
No? Okay, have you reviewed the, your five premises comments regarding the hydrants?
Yeah, there's one extra hydrant that's in the plan.
Has the, yeah, it's up there, okay.
We did propose, propose a few, and we showed, I think it wasn't clear what the existing was, existing pipelines were on the site, and our coordination within gave email to understand the agreement.
It's within the six hundred feet, also, also the roadway that goes around it.
Yes.
But it, I don't think they accepted the South Greenbush Road as a, as a viable fire road at that distance.
We'll coordinate that with the fire chief and the fire inspector. We do have fire aerial, aerial access routes, as, as per SIG two already on the plan, but we'll coordinate with this fire inspector to verify that, it's, who says right?
Okay, and is, is not gonna be a high capacity warehouse, pure warehouse?
No.
Okay, previous, in one of the previous meetings, you talked about sensibilities gonna be forty feet high? That they're gonna be using mechanical movement within the building itself, of the...
I, I'm not sure, but the architect is here, if you'd like to ask him that question directly.
Okay.
Barry, would you like to address that?
If you don't know, because you don't have a tenant, come on, state your name.
What's your last name, Barry?
Barry, postkanser, P O S K A N Z E R.
Go ahead, Barry.
I think the answer to your question, is, is, is the user going to be using robotic systems in the warehousing? I think that's the direction you're going, that's the answer, if you don't have a tenant, so you can't have an answer. It's been designed so that it's not gonna be a big box user, because by the time you put the sprinkler system and the spaces required above those robotics, it wouldn't be a big box type of use. It may be robotic, that's a separate question from big box.
Okay, nothing further at this time, I'll lose her right now.
Before you sit down, I'll push down a question before you sit down. Is it kind of clarified to me, the difference between a big box and robotics?
Yes, robotics are a system where you can go down the aisle and go up and pick up things out of the warehousing crate that's been built. Big box is higher, with a more sophisticated construction, in fact, the floors have to be uniquely flat to go higher than that, and they generally are in the five hundred and six hundred to a million square feet for big box users to be efficient. That's why we suspect, and in fact, quite know, this isn't gonna work for that kind of use.
You're saying that the floor and the stuff height will not make it possible to be a...
No, 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 the floor, the floor is, you would do a super, it's called a super flat floor.
So it's the floor you're planning on putting in?
Would be a super flat floor, which would allow a robotic to go thirty-five feet without tipping over.
Oh, that's, so you're saying that the plan you have will not have this vision floor for, for a high volume?
Yes, the high volume.
And you won't have the height for the high volume?
We don't have the height for the high volume, that's, that's the real criteria.
That's why you said that it's not...
Correct, the robotics are a separate question, I shouldn't have connected those two.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Ford.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, do you mind if I just interject? Sorry, Mr. Ford, I know everyone has lots of questions, but just from what I've heard so far, I don't believe the applicant's gonna be able to go forward with SECP or forward today. So I think they're gonna have to ask for a continuance, two reasons. Number one is, this board can't do SECP without a full and complete EAF, which we don't have, so that's number one. You can't even do SECP, and if you don't do SECP, you can't vote on anything. And then secondly, it seems to me that there needs to be at least one override. When you look at county planning number twelve, they said specifically, the two sites should either be merged into one lot or designed as two separate parcels. That requires an override. For an override of this board of seven members, you need five people. You don't got five people tonight, so you can't give an override. So, I believe the applicant's gonna have to ask for a continuation, which means, I don't know that we need, everyone needs to ask quite as many questions, because you're not gonna be voting on anything tonight, just so everyone knows.
That was actually gonna be one of my points. So I'll keep it short, there's a lot of concerns in this project, you can tell that. So, like Rick said, I'm just gonna leave it to myself, just one part, you know. I just, I took some notes when, Mr. Sparco?
This is Carl Mark, so what, when you were talking. I agree with the property rights, you know, we look at what goes on in the property, and then more importantly, what goes on outside the property. So we look at how your building affects your neighbors and the town. And I just bring out, you know, the plan for review as laid out by the town code, here's just those rights.
I agree.
You're correct. And we, we look at the intent, the zone code, the town comprehensive plan, the health, safety, general welfare of surrounding community, so it's all laid out right there, so when we make our questions and decisions, it's really based on what we have in the town code and our job as a planning board. It talks about wetlands and water, I just wanna know where I'm coming from with these questions. Like I said, we don't have full environmental review, so we can't rely on that, we can't get you SECP.
Okay, we didn't anticipate we'd get a decision, but anyway.
Yeah.
Not a problem, I would definitely have the full EAF separately for each project before next meeting.
All right, so I just wanna point that on your, the short EAF, just some quick questions. You put down that it's consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, they put yes.
Yes.
Do you, do you have anything to back that up, that, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
What was your like?
I will, let me see, I have that up. In our plan, wetlands and water bodies should be protected through local regulation, that limit development generally with a hundred-foot buffer adjacent to wetlands and water bodies. So you have wetlands on the property, the comprehensive plan talks about a hundred-foot buffer to protect these wetlands. Another part, it talks about, another water body that defines the town and the biography is Sparkville Creek. Any encroaching upon developments affected, and has adverse effect on the environment features and you're adjacent to Sparkville Creek, it's supposed to... So in our comprehensive plan, it looks like this answer isn't backed up by the comprehensive plan, just one, one half.
We have a wall, three-foot-high carpet wall, delineated throughout the entire site, bicycling the site, that protects the wetlands in full, and also maintains the drainage patterns. Most of mountain, mountain rock comes down and hits sash, and we've continued that same pattern.
Did you agree all the consultants' letters that describe how the wetlands are affected by your plan? Did you agree all the consultants letters that describe how the wetlands is affected by your plan?
I, uh...
Like the snow removal area?
The snow removal, uh, in any, all the snow removal, all the snow melt on site heads to one of the four different detention slash treatment bases. Uh, I wasn't, uh, I had this, I had to meet with Bruce Peters to discuss the...
He, he has thirty-five forms.
Yes. Thirty-five forms and most of them are with fine-tuned design, uh, profile, existing profiles. That's, that's, that's a site planning requirement that he's asking for now that wasn't asked before. Uh, but that's okay. We can accommodate his request. But it's things like that. Uh, and the snow storage locations, when the snow melts anywhere, it all flows down to the detention bases, whether it's next to the detention base in Fort Wayne or not. So we have to just coordinate the locations that he's happy with. And I will definitely be with him and go through all the items with him to make sure he's satisfied.
And, and you remove trees in the wetlands, according to your plan?
No trees in the wetlands. Wetlands aren't being touched one bit, so I can't...
I will point you down when we come back. I will look at that plan and there are, there are trees that need removed within the wetland area.
Not within the wetlands, I can vent to that. Because there's a wall between the wetlands and the cycle of...
We'll have that discussion again with the zoning plan.
Okay. Or if, maybe, maybe the foundation of the wall next to the wetland, but not in the wetland are being moved.
No. Uh, and number eight, uh, you opened a mission on this. You said, will a proposed action develop a substantial increase in traffic above the... Now, was you said yes, that's, that's a true answer. Right, so you agree that this development has a substantial increase in traffic?
Uh, which was mitigated or addressed in the traffic report.
Oh, you said yes to agree that it would have a substantial increase in traffic?
When we first did the short form EAF, there was no traffic study form. We did this short EAF, what's the date of the short EAF, is the one we asked?
Two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
There was a full submitted.
There was a full submitted?
And back in March of twenty twenty, I had some corrections that needed to be made and asked for a revised one to be submitted and hasn't been received.
So this is only, you have to work on, you haven't submitted any?
I understand that.
So this is a full one?
I understand that.
Mr. McCrory, we do have a full EAF that was submitted in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
There's one after that. However, I, I requested some changes be made. I have not received that revised one.
Okay. So there was a full EAF and you just don't have the latest topic? What I'm saying with the traffic is, try to...
Wait, wait, can we clarify that?
Say again?
There was a full EAF, we just don't have the copy.
A revised one was not submitted to this department?
But a full EAF was provided for and a best.
Right, but I, I requested revisions and for it to be re-submitted.
Then it's not a problem. We can, we can make those revisions.
And I have to...
Just to, for the record thing, as I recall, as you stated that there's this short form EAF, there is a long form, it just, you don't have the...
No, no, this is a long form. So I just want to give the things that I pointed out that...
It's not a problem.
Uh, all right, yeah, just do you mind one thing, because they don't make, you're not getting SECPRA tonight. Uh, so I don't know if, even if I want to go on any further, I have mediation with the traffic. Everybody knows there's going to be traffic headache there.
We have our traffic consultant here to answer any traffic questions you may have, Barry.
Yeah, we'll save it for later. But this is going to be, this is going to be, but just one, last thing I want to point out, move on. Uh, you said you've addressed a lot of Bruce Peters issues. And I, I want to bring it up right now, but number one just sticks out, I think you and Mr. Mandell had a little back and forth. And you, uh, in your letter, I don't know if we're going to put, uh, the applicant's man, letter of nine twenty-one, said it was agreed with the town that the stormwater pollution prevention plan can be provided later with plans submitted for final approval as the drainage report has been improved with conditions at the start. And he writes, first big thing, says this department made no such agreement.
He made no written agreement. He told me that face to face that it was no problem to submit at a later date.
But his October twenty-second letter says he made no agreement.
That's what he's saying now and I'll comply and address his, his in his comments.
And throughout his letter, sporadically, he kept saying, this is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. So a lot of these things, it really, it's, I mean, it's a design of all from unacceptable. Being too close to the, uh, the wetlands, the snow storage, unacceptable. So there's a lot of, a lot of issues here.
That's not a problem. We're going to work together with you.
All right. That, that's awesome, Barry. I could go on, but I appreciate it.
All right, I, just one, uh, the reason you don't have separate driveways with two cars?
We, we're trying to minimize, at the time, when we first designed this project back in two thousand eighteen, we're trying to minimize the amount of entryways onto the road. So we kept it to the two that were existing and one emergency access exit out only on the, the north end. Uh, trying to keep the, in purpose, because we have to provide so much, so many parking spaces to begin with. At the time, we can look at reducing that, maybe trying to expand the engine. We also have to work with the county highway, which I'll, they worked with my traffic engineer on the highway, uh, opening permits and whatnot. Uh, but that's the reason, because we're trying to make best use of the existing traffic, driveway entrance.
Before we talk about opening up the problem, which I do want to do, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know if it's kind of a lean through, came all the way here. I think it's probably good for our view of how that is starting fully loaded further.
Absolutely.
Sure, I will try to protect someone from there.
Give her a microphone. Yeah, give her a microphone.
So the original traffic study was concluded by the applicant's consultant, Colliers. And Mr. Ronald Freeman is present today as well. Uh, we have, we, this is our third round review for the traffic study. We've reviewed the traffic study three times at this point. Um, we've been back and forth on things like the traffic analysis for the existing future conditions and build conditions, as well as safety, parking. At this point, we, uh, the consultant has fully addressed our comments on the no build condition, which is the future condition without, uh, future condition without the project, the existing condition. Uh, the traffic capacity analysis is also to our standards and the crash analysis is correct. We do still have remaining comments on trip generation and parking. Namely, as everyone's heard today, with trip generation, they are currently using land use one fifty, which is general warehousing for trip generation. However, uh, as stated, Rockland Planning has commented that land use one fifty-six for Haiku Parcel Hub may be more appropriate. We also believe that using the land use code would provide a more conservative estimate. And as the applicant today does not know who, who the actual, uh, who the actual company used tenants would be, uh, it would be more conservative and potentially more appropriate to use this higher trip generation. It would result in five times more trips, uh, five times more trips total compared to what is currently analyzed. That should be noted. For parking, um, I guess the main issue is that truck parking is not provided. I think Mr. Scarr, he stated that he will go back and revise the site plan to include this truck parking. Uh, based on our initial review, the average parking demand would be forty-six spaces at one twenty-five and fourteen spaces for one fifty-five. And this is not including any of the spaces at the loading docks. In addition to this, um, it should be noted that it, uh, there is no parking demand or there is no parking demand rate for land use code one fifty-six, which again is the parcel hub, parcel hub warehouse. However, uh, depending on the number of loading docks present, which is not exactly clear on the current site plan, um, a Haiku warehouse typically has two times the number of loading docks as the number of car parking spaces. So we would recommend using the higher of the two, the two times the number of loading docks or the, uh, part of the demand based on land use one fifty for a warehouse. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. At this point, you're going to start hoping, I'll put a couple of comments first. Do you have some time to finish up?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions.
No, we're doing that.
No, no, just a couple of things, I'm sorry. Um, this, you said that the wall will ensure that the water coming off the site is not nothing, will stay on the property. Uh, looking at the snow dump on the, it would be on the east side of the, uh, wall, three-foot wall. So that would be...
That, that's one of the ones we're going to remove.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I was, the wall is to protect the wetlands as well as, uh, ensure that the drainage travels in the path of existing conditions.
Right. Okay, that's why when I saw the small...
Good time and that's, we're taking that off now.
Right, and we don't, you don't, still, since you don't know exactly what the tenants are doing, you don't know the number of vehicles, trucks that are going to be casing the site?
I don't, but, um, the representative of the owners here just told me that, but it looks like the entire four hundred fifteen thousand per feet may be taken by the same tenant. He's got some correspondence and he's going to show the next one.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing, I will label it something, we'll just finish it next time.
Right, we can provide some paperwork to, uh, give you more detail on that.
All right, so talking about public, the public session, a couple of things before we open. Hosts a lot of interest here. We do want to hear what everyone has to say. As, as customer, we give three minutes to each speaker. Um, as we said, and some of us have been others about, really about our comments, now we ask you that someone ahead of you said what you want to say. So don't even read a prepared speech with the doctor saying thing. Please, I agree with the person in front of me and a few more pieces.
Your favor doesn't help me.
Oh, sorry. Did you, did I hear what I said? I said again.
Yes, we are, we are.
Okay. So just please, if you can kind of keep your comments so we can get as many comments as possible with as many people and still, um, yeah, respect everybody's time. Okay, so I'll be giving three minutes per person. And one thing I do want to remind everyone is when you speak, speak to the board. Do not speak to the applicant. They're going to answer you each time. At the end, they'll be taking some notes. They may choose to answer some of your questions in mass at the end. But they keep it for the future meeting.
State their name and when they look.
Okay. Good. Last thing, when you come up, please state your name and your address for our recorder and then I'll start the time after she's finished getting all her notes. And with that said...
Mr. Sweeney, what do I do?
Uh, if you want...
Yeah, I can do it too. Microphone's over there.
Are you going to leave them over there or?
Yes.
Okay.
Nope, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Elizabeth Dudley. Fifty South Green Bush Road. From this. Um, oh, what is it?
Do you want to raise it up? Why hold it?
Okay.
They're very finny.
Okay, here we go. Um, as the applicants pointed out, this plan has been in front of the planning board several times and rightfully so. This is a complex project, trying to marry and unmarried two large properties. I feel like every time they come back, they don't answer to the things that they were asked to answer before. And so it's really hard to keep track of everything. Um, as you've read by the many agencies that submitted paperwork, there are major concerns surrounding this project. Tonight, I would like to focus on SECPRA. We believe this project should be declared a type one under SECPRA and issue a positive declaration upon the basis that the development is likely to have a significant adverse environmental impact in several areas, including traffic, impact on transportation, and noise, impact on noise, odor, and light. These are the following reasons why. Um, the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act requires all state and local government agencies to consider environmental impacts equally with social and economic factors during the discretionary decision making. At last review of the file, only one report for the one twenty-five South Green Bush short form can be found. It appears to be intentionally splitting up, more or less gaming the system, so the owner and developer can get a building permit without a proper SECPRA, including future use. This is a concern for not, uh, for not just us, but also the immediate neighbors, the town, the county, the state, and everyone else in that place, sorry. This should be one report, the long form. The property is adjacent to the Spark Hill Creek and is part of the watershed, which is of the environmental significance and is a tributary to the Hudson River. The Spark Hill Creek is already cited as a most polluted tributary of the Hudson River. This will make matters worse. I also believe the developer has incorrectly mapped existing wetlands. Aerial photos and videos will demonstrate this. The engineers stated that these wetlands are more plant-based. They are not, and they are, um, they're not, and they are there because the water coming out of the mountain springs and the mountain runoff does not percolate. There are a lot of standing waters in this open space. The water eventually makes its way around the property from the north to the east to the south and the back west until Culver and into the storm drains at the southwest end of one twenty-five and empty into Spark Hill Creek. When the one fifty-five wetlands flood, they flood into an open space and an existing flora soaps it up. They need to map these wetlands properly to ensure that they are not disturbed. Um, we also want to mention that the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction and that agency does not to be, appear to be notified. Air pollution is a major concern. Um, we also...
That was delicate, we need one, so please try to write for the shot.
Okay.
She could take two more minutes. Maybe you could take four.
Okay, well, I had it mixed at the beginning, so add a minute for that. Um, I also want to say that, uh, you stated that, the applicant stated that, um, the current tenant is going to be utilizing this. I would just like to note that the current tenant, um, has so many tractor-trailer trucks trying to access their land that we are literally inundated with tractor-trailers. And I've spent about a half four years working with the county, the state, and the town to get this. We are taxpayers, we deserve to be heard, and we deserve for this to be recognized as a seriously large project that, you know, impacts the entire surrounding town. And to also, you know, as a parent, to hear that you're just going to pull the busing, you know, when you decide you want to strike ground is also, you know, rather upsetting. So I'll let the, the PTA know about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to speak next?
Vanessa Lappens, six fifty-nine Western Highway.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, what was the number again?
Six fifty-nine Western Highway, Blaude.
Thank you.
Coupon Hamlet's of Orange. Echoing Mr. McCrory, a lot of decisions, a lot of attention is now on the comprehensive plan, which is beginning a revision. It ought to guide the decisions of the board. Today, I submitted many examples that discuss the preservation of the creek, the desire to preserve open space, especially the creek and claws in adjacent areas. I hope that the board keeps them in mind and understands that outside the overlay zone doesn't give the developer wiggle room to ignore the provisions of the plan. We have three major and one minor warehouse projects in a very small radius, all of which will impact the environment, help safety and welfare of the town, and will change the character of the town forever. We need to view these as one whole project, or sorry, as one whole impact to the town or the whole process ceases to make sense. One fifty-five is a rare opportunity to preserve a valuable chunk of open space that's clawed in adjacent. I encourage the, all of us to find a way to do this. The list of, of issues on this project is long and serious, and I won't reiterate all of them all here tonight. I do want to comment on a couple of things. There's a bit of gaming going on. It feels a little bit like a shell game. A forty-foot-high, twenty-four-seven warehouse is what was said by the developer in the previous meeting. If this isn't a high queue, high-volume warehouse, then what is the definition? We talked about the parking. Eight hundred, eighteen hundred and five spaces are what's required. We're now going to play a game with employees that says only twenty-five employees. required, we're now going to play a game with employees that says only twenty-five employees. Well, if only twenty-five employees are required, then it clearly is a high-volume automated warehouse. And so the game that we play of not really knowing with the tenant and this and that, I believe that that's disingenuous and needs to be really nailed down by the board. Ignoring the intersection and the routing of trucks over the mountain and the illegal right turning is ridiculous and has to be included as part of any review of the traffic patterns. And then finally, we have a petition with over eighteen hundred signers. It wasn't given enough time to scrub it down to only Orange Town residents, but that's in process now. But a lot of people think this is a very bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
I'm Eric Bosley at two twenty, South Green Bush Road.
Just spelled your last name?
B-O-S-L-E-Y.
And I missed the number, what was it?
Two twenty.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board, I know it's a difficult job. Also, just to clarify some things, they said they needed no variances this time, but I thought there was parking in a side yard or a side yard setback because the two buildings are too close together, and they are going to have to do a personal arrangement for that, just want to clear that up. And if they do build it out and FedEx wants to, is the highest bidder on the lease, is there a trigger that they have to come back for a used permit, or like, what system is in place to protect us, protect us from that? If any? Oh, just, they've made some inconsistent comments, the architect at the first meeting is on the record, I think it's on video, saying that the forty-foot building heights are absolutely necessary for public automated, high-volume, high-queue warehousing, the technology that's required today, and today, they've locked that back and said something totally different, so I think they should have to clear that up. It falls into the exact definition of a mega warehouse, it's over twice the size of a mega warehouse, which is supposed to be two hundred thousand square feet. The Masur Traffic, the eighth KRF Traffic Study also said that although Masur concludes that trip generation is less than the actually trip generation assumptions, this is under one fifty. The data presented is inconsistent with accounts provided in their appendix. They didn't reply to that comment, so it seems like even their one fifty trip generation is not accurate. I totally agree, it's a, it should be use code one fifty-six, and like I said, I'd just like to know if there's any triggers, if they built it out, and then, at least it turns out, like, what, what do we do? Thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
Hi, my name's Agnes Caniza, C-A-N-I-Z-A.
Wait, I lost the C-A.
N-I-Z-A.
Z.
Z, as in Z-A, okay. And I live on Eighteenth Spruce Street. Yes, I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that was previously said, but in addition to that, my other concern is, I live very close to this proposed project, how is that going to impact the value of our properties? Because, you know, that is something to also consider in all of this. You know, I've been living here for fifteen years, there are people who have been living here for even longer, and, you know, this could have a significant impact on that as well. It's just something else to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this matter?
Joseph Dudley, two fifty, South Green Bush. I'd just like to agree with everything that was previously said, the traffic's been a concern for me, I feel like there were a lot of comments about, that's just details, we'll work out those details, and I really didn't feel like we got much, we didn't get really many real answers here. This is the same, it's the same answer I've got last time I was here, and the time before that, that they're not really giving us, they're not really giving us much of what we need here to, to get this, you know, to try and get this thing done the right way, if there is a right way to do it. I personally don't think there is a right way to build a forty-foot-high warehouse in a, basically a residential neighborhood, and, but, you know, I know that's up to the board, and I appreciate your, your comments and your, and your in-depth questions.
Who else would like to speak?
Can I also ask, I don't, I never saw the total loading base on plans, does anybody know the total number of loading bases are? When I count existing on-site and proposed in the plans, I count fifty-six, but I don't saw.
Okay, yeah. What's that?
That's in the consultant's comments.
Yeah, they asked the same question. The consultant asked the same question. Anyone else like to speak? And before a motion to close the public portion, Mr. Mandel, second?
Second.
Mr. Bond, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Would the applicant like to respond to any comments this time, or a way to further future meeting?
We're not responding at this time, thanks.
I guess, as you heard, the board, there's still a lot of concerns, as you did as well, about the plans and what's not in them yet. So as our attorney said, based upon things that are missing, we're going to recommend, we can't ask for, we recommend that you ask for continuance, which would mean that nothing can be decided today, then we'll come back for future meeting with some of these questions and to our satisfaction going further.
We're prepared to ask for continuance at this time, I just like clarification, you've closed the public hearing.
No, we closed the public portion of this meeting, not the hearing at all, the public portion of this.
Okay.
Yes?
We did, we did just discuss that.
Yeah.
You're fine, no, you're correct.
Yeah, we closed the public portion of this meeting, not the hearing. Okay? All right? So you guys have a table?
I have.
On this matter or both matters?
Both matters.
Okay, both matters. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Do we have a minute or so?
Yeah, October thirteen.
So, what is that? Do you want to make a motion to both?
Hello, hello, we have other business, so please take it outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mike, Mike, so through the minutes of October thirteen?
Two minutes?
Mike, Mike. Mr. Bond, second?
Wait, wait.
Get that away.
You can't hear you.
You can leave the chair.
Leave the chair.
There's a, there's a seat. Also making space on the. So Mr. Mandel made a motion to include the minutes with one exception. Now, Mandel was present, not absent. Okay, I'm a second for that. Mr. Bond seconded, all in favor? Aye, close.
Do you want to hear anything else?
Anything else, sir?
No.
Motion, motion by Mr. Bond, seconded by Mr. Mandel, all in favor? Aye, close. Thank you for, thank you for a smooth first meeting, thank you. You did a good job.
Great job. You have to sign something.
Camera?
Wait a second.